County Councilor, Mr. Hattler. Where is the flag? And to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody had time to review the minutes, or do we need a minute? Everybody's reviewed them, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I said move.
Bill makes motion. Janice seconds, and enter discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Reducing special purpose jail types. If it's all right, we're gonna kind of put a hold on that till Ruben gets done doing a little over a few things. All right? He's still checking a few things like that.
That wasn't timed. A timer that I don't have.
No, no, it's good. Increased COOM cap and COOM bridge lev- tax levies. The commissioners sent a rate yesterday. I talked to Ruben on the phone. We don't have to do anything with that. We approved the rates in July and August, whenever we do the approval. Is that correct, Jan? Whenever we do that?
Correct. When you do your budget adoption.
When we do budget adoption, we approve rates in, so really, this is up to them.
Point zero three three three.
On both of them. The COOM bridge increase will, it's a wash. They'll have to, we'll lose out of some other departments. About ninety thousand, I think is what it amounts to, is what will be, if I remember right, from what Ruben gave me here. I think we still got a copy of here, on COOM bridge. Yeah, it increases at ninety thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. That will have to be taken out of the other levies, out of the other rates, to make that up. And that's the reason he's working on the special purpose tax, to see if some things can be transferred over to that, and help make up the difference. Does that make sense, Ruben?
Okay, so both the rates went to point oh three three.
Yeah, now the COOM cap is a tax increase. And it will bring in roughly three hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars increase in COOM cap.
How much?
Three hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars is what he's estimating the increase on COOM cap. Went from point zero two four nine to point three three, point zero three three three. That will be a property tax increase. I think, would you say, Mark? Assess valued a hundred and forty-eight thousand's about eleven dollar increase. Is that correct?
According to Ruben.
On a house, pardon?
According to what Ruben says, yes.
Yeah, I think that's what. So this one's not on us. Okay. Additional ARP. Animal shelter, nine thousand dollars. Is this for your building?
No.
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay.
Okay. It's for your building, you got a building.
It is.
Okay. Am I gonna look at it?
We had, we had set aside thirty-five thousand, I think, for the animal shelter, for some projects that needed to be done out there, and that was one of them that got taken care of. So we advertised that, but that'll come out of that thirty-five thousand that we set aside for them. We didn't appropriate it, but we just set it to the side, earmarked it, so we got money to pay for that.
Yeah, that's on the part.
Yeah.
There'll be another additional next.
Pardon?
For the balance, yes.
Another additional for balance?
For the balance.
Thirty-five.
Was it forty-five?
Okay, okay. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Ashley makes a motion to approve. Not many seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Another one for the sheriff, for ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's the total on both these?
No, so there's.
I got another one here, it's eight forty.
So the ten thousand is for the reimbursement for the first quarter of the part-time salaries. And then the eight hundred and forty is reimbursement for the FICA benefits for the part-time. And that's money that we took from commissary and put into the budget to cover that.
Okay, so it's coming out of commissary, it's going into the budget.
Okay.
Everybody understand that? Intertain a motion to approve. Bill makes a motion, Bill seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. I don't see any transfers. Do we have any transfers? Bill transfers? Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Okay. Josh, you wanna give us a little talk here?
Sure. Hopefully, I had a case where you remember that I had sent to you. Also said that, as I mentioned, we did discuss it yesterday. What we are looking to do, it's kind of a multi-year project. In two thousand twenty-one, we switched from an older system that the city agreement with the engineering had been using for email to an open source, in-house solution that would pay some licensing for some additional features. Over the last two years, we've all had to determine that it's just not doing what it needs, what we need out of it. Some of the productivity things are not there compared to the solution available today. We had actually set aside some ARPA money, worked with the committee last year to potentially look at replacing that. However, things have changed with pricing and government solutions from Microsoft. And the money we had set aside was specifically for email. What we're proposing now, just in the last year, is taking over all, you know, IT services. We're kind of realizing that the Microsoft Office licensing situation is kind of all over the place. We have some offices that have it in their budget and pay for it themselves. Sheriff's Department has it several years, I think. It's added in their budget. Not that it affects you directly, but same way on the city side, I think, some departments pay for it. Some are using copies from two thousand ten, that maybe were just, you know, back in two thousand eleven or two thousand twelve. So the proposed solution is actually the government edition of Microsoft hosted product. So that's not just email, it is Teams for messaging, group places, a lot of our Zoom subscriptions and appliance costs, as well as the ability to do secure email sending. I know HR, office officers, have a lot of requests for that. Additionally, our calendaring and contact. Get a lot of complaints trying to use shared calendars, group calendars, scheduling, this very medium is a resource that is an issue. So what we put together, that is just the government pricing. We've checked directly with Dell, who takes care of the state PPA product, our prices of the states of Indiana, as well as two of our other vendors, and they're within a dollar of each other. So we're gonna kind of take a look and see what we can do there as far as trying not to set up a whole new account or a whole new vendor for that dollar a person difference, but working through that. I provided the highest number in the request. And the thing is, it actually went to their board two weeks ago. They've conditionally approved it, because our goal is to install this as one tenant within Microsoft's realm of things. So all city, county, government would all show up in the same system, same shared contact list, able to schedule resources for each other. As well as some examples of big issues happening with courts and police officers and attorneys, trying to schedule the courts and which attorney and which officer, if they're available. We have three or four different shared calendars and email accounts, and things just are not working the way they are. So that's been probably the biggest headache request that we've gotten. So that is kind of it. Any questions or anything I can clarify more specifically?
And we've paid two-thirds, is that right?
Roughly, I think the counts today, and they change quite a bit. The reason is, it's really difficult to compare apples to apples, since this includes the office product, the higher dollar amount, I think I have two hundred and fifteen quantity of. That would be for any person that has a computer and a full mailbox. But we also have a lot of additional mailboxes that are just email, like auditor, assessor, prosecutor, that we keep. And we want those to be separate for various reasons. Today, we pay for those as a mailbox. That would, in this price scheme, would be a whole other office subscription, and five more computers at office can be installed on. We don't need that, so there's the cheaper dollar amounts on there, as well as if it's purely just a shared mailbox, we don't pay additional licensing for that at all. So we're really kind of struggling to figure that out. It's gonna be department by department basis. I think the city is looking at roughly a hundred and five or a hundred and ten mailboxes, and the county is looking at about two fifteen. But it is individually licensed by person, and we see that in the portal. So when we do the true-ups, or the additional licensing each year, because we pay for it annually, because we do that each year, those shifts and levels are appropriated and adjusted, so we just have to manage where we are each time we true-up. The city has this many accounting hours at this point.
Does this affect mailroom?
Yes, that is included in our cost comparison.
We're looking at what, fifty-three thousand, is that what you?
Roughly, I'm hoping that it'll be less than that. We have, I think it was right at seventeen thousand in ARPA set aside for that. Again, that was just email, that's why there's still such a cost difference, that they don't include Microsoft Office. And that does again, just, that was only one user. What was that?
Just put everybody on the same page, Jan, so we can talk about, just.
Yeah.
One thing together.
We really ran into it a little more here, just in the last year, at the courthouse. As I mentioned, some offices have office subscriptions that they use, and when I add the city into it, we have some departments that was paid for with this credit card, and they're reimbursed. Now, this was on someone else's email account, it's a Hotmail account they're using for work. And there's just no consistency, and it's very difficult, and we have to go swap out a computer. Not doing it to try to make it easier on us, but also, it's, I'm not even sure from a licensing account, what we have. And there's no way to truly true that up without looking at every computer and every person's credit card, to see who's paying for what. So that, that actually was kind of why we really looked at it. If we're gonna do the email switch, we're trying to clean up some of the licensing. This is just kind of the way to do it all at once, to really get us to have the industry standard. I'm sure most of you probably use Office three sixty-five or Google Drive, your Google Docs, those are basically the two options.
How like, it will improve security and make it easier.
Correct. The other big piece, and we've gone back and forth with this from a legal perspective, both city and county, their security and email retention policies. There are technical areas that you read that even if we're using Office three sixty-five, if we're not using the government cloud edition, we should not share or save any files in, after being stored on the public side, they can't guarantee security. So that's why the agreement that we put together and worked with the state PPA is specific for government. It means all of the federal data standards. Our data sits in specific data centers around the U.S. because of those requirements. So the ability to share files, attorney requests, even your packets. You could literally just do it, but notice, and it would be in our secure attachment area. So that's one of the things. There's a lot of little details that matter to some departments and not to others, but.
Is there dollars going out into different departments that we're paying for things that'll be taken out?
There are some that are specific line items. I don't know, just with only being in here in here, and I really haven't set down a lot of the non-public safety departments. It's true, they're about to, yeah, that's something we're really hoping this year to be more involved in to help. Because I know there are some things that we've double budgeted for that we caught last year. Not exactly, I mean, one year under our belts, it's kind of figured out, but even already this year, you have email, security training, spam filtering, and the antivirus product that we use on the machines. Those are the big ones, that some departments actually have car routes for, so it's something we can definitely look at next year.
Want to ask a question, anything ARPA could help with on this?
We did help with it, that's kind of what started this whole discussion.
Okay, so we got anything to happen to?
Yeah.
Well, the problem with ARPA using funds on this is this is gonna be a recurring cost, so it's gonna be kind of a false.
Oh, all right, next time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had it, we had it in the project list, is that this will get us a year into it. And even the security training, that's something I'm working with, the mayor has asked for, for the city, and we're gonna prepare it, obviously, both boards and councils. For a lot of the projects that we did day one, and we either did three-year terms, or we had a grant, supplement part of it, or we had maintenance coming due, or things like that. We're trying to get that into, what does it look like, you know, if you look at every three years, or about the cost? And kind of like I mentioned, when I first came to the council, we're trying to get things that's kind of cash flow positive, as possible, to not have to come to you. You know, if we did not do this kind of a subscription, we would probably every four or five years be needing the cost of purchase office and email for every department, over and over. We have these just huge, huge jobs versus trying to get a long-term plan, and it's easy to budget forward.
So should we make new budgets from here on out?
Yeah, that is another discussion that we've started. Whether, there are three or four things that are consistent that we purchased for the city and the county, but they don't fall in our budget today, because they're not fifty-fifty. The city is, has a couple of ideas, what they would like to do, they would like to talk to you guys, and actually discuss it. You know, I've been having a meeting just before the budget meeting started, and whether we take email expense, antivirus, cybersecurity training, some of those things that we either pay per computer or per employee for, that we're the ones that are purchasing it, we're giving it every year, but it's not in our budget. Do we have our budget that's fifty-fifty funded, all of these line items? And then we have two additional line items, one for the city and one for the county, that each one hundred percent funds, so that all of these things are in our budget, and you can see them and see what they are, instead of, you know, from the city perspective, they're awards, and one line item under the board works, this is the fifty percent that they pay for our budget. They don't know the breakdown, and, oh, we can pay for our email, they don't see that today. So they're asking, we do that on their side of the budget? And I said, well, whatever we do, obviously, we would like to do it consistently, so that we can provide the same information to everyone. That's a discussion that has come up in the last month, since this has been an issue. How do we fix this for next year, try to fix transparency and easy to manage as possible?
I also have any questions? We have the advertising on, Jan. This will have an additional advertising.
Yeah, so, and that was the question, why I sent it to both of you, to know what the commissioners had versus you, and who's funded.
Would you know, do you want me to advertise the additional?
Hell, I don't know. I never got a, I don't have a, my only financial sheet, I got two in last month. We didn't get any of this money.
You didn't get a COOM cap or a?
Pardon?
You didn't get a COOM cap? So, to make COOM cap for.
I would say COOM caps probably, well, would that be useful?
And this wouldn't be for, would you be using the funds from ARPA that you have towards it? Would it be for, would it be for the whole amount? You said you had seventeen thousand.
Yeah, we had seventeen thousand allocated for the ARPA funds, as well as some other items that we were able to save money on the city, but I didn't know how that project worked, I didn't want to assume that this was the total we had. And we actually saved fifteen thousand dollars, so we're, could cover it all. I don't, that's why I said to both commissioners and council, because I didn't know exactly how this would work. Commissioners have to approve it.
If the ARPA funds.
Have been appropriated.
Been appropriated, then, but even if we wanted to do additional, and we're just pay it one time, we couldn't. I mean, if we, if it's fifty-three a year, and we help support that, it'd just be, we're still gonna have to get that budget figured out.
Well, I think. That's the reason I wanted to get through one year.
Well, I think what he's asking is, you've saved money along the way, and you weren't sure if you could utilize that towards it. That's correct. And I'd say if we've appropriated it for cybersecurity, you're welcome to use it.
Yeah, I just, I know when we last kind of trued up what we could spend, you know, it was a little confusing, because we had to go through, pull the city half back in to make sure everything lined up the way to expect it. I didn't know if that money had already been reallocated or.
We have not, no.
It's still in there.
No.
But if we.
I think that.
We needed to support that with some additional dollars to get to budget time, so we can figure out what we're gonna pay it out of. We might be able to do that, I'm not saying we are, but we certainly could talk about it, but it would be just the one time. We'd have, still have to figure out how we're.
Right, and then next year we'd have to figure out.
For the rest of the time, yeah. But maybe we need to do that, to look and see where our savings is gonna be by doing that. How much of that we're gonna be able to save in the other departments by combining it all together.
Yeah, we'd come up with, you know, if it's fifty-three thousand a year, we can save one grand by adding a subscription that we can cancel,
and, you know, we can, we know we're gonna have that money back in there.
Yeah, and just, just to be fair, when I say the other departments have it in their budget, what they have in their budget is just the recurring Microsoft Office costs. It is a significantly different cost for all the products, but it's part of.
Maybe something in there, maybe something there that we can.
Right.
Grab a few dollars on.
I'll double check. The number that Janet has here of what's left is not enough to cover all of this, for what was allocated for us, but I just want to make sure, I know that seems pretty close.
Yeah, just double check.
But just to make sure.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll need updated numbers.
Yeah, updated numbers, I'll have to take a look at it next meeting.
ARPA meeting, gonna look at it, Jan?
We can, yeah. We know what we got, what you're needing, and see what we can do. And I'm not saying we can do it, I'm just saying whether we can take a look at it.
Then the next year, it can be put into budget.
Yeah, well, that's where we're gonna be at.
We're trying to be really cautious, because the ARPA funds are dwindling down. And we'd rather save what we've got left for some major issue that we really don't have the money for, rather than slowly taking piece by piece by piece. And then when we have a major need, because we still have till the end of two thousand twenty-four to promise those monies. So if we keep ten thousand here, ten thousand there, then if we need it, we won't have it, so.
We'll just have to evaluate what we got, and what we're able to do.
What's your timeline, Josh?
That's kind of a little bit of a crunch for it. We actually started to do this project, we're trying to do it at the beginning of this year, and after going through some hoops, but the state realizing that the pricing they initially had given us was for three years. But that was the per, that was per-year cost was the total, not a third. And I had to email, or I specifically asked the question, and even the reps selling it to us didn't understand how it worked. So I've actually paid for a temporary six-month extension on our email and our Zoom licensing, just to keep things running, always figured out, which is always through June. So we're gonna be pushing it regardless of what we do. I'm gonna see, I believe the only functionality, if we do let that lapse in, 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 in our internal personnel six months, of what we have, it's the way we have some cell phones set up, new received email would have to be reset up. The system will continue to function, everyone with their outlook and their, some cell phones, just one of the enhanced features we pay for is the synchronization with certain cell phones. And not we go away if we didn't pay it, we just pay for support, for the product we have, because we maintain it. It's on our infrastructure, our backups, everything. That will continue to function. We may just lose the cell phone synchronization feature for a month. You know, it's gonna take us another month to get this switched over.
Anyone else have anything else? I guess, my guess, we have to support it. Let's figure out where to find it.
Appreciate it.
Take a look, and if not, we, I guess COOM cap would be the next place to go, wouldn't it, Jan? Sorry, man.
Touche.
All right, thank you. If you have any questions, feel free to, if you need more, you can call.
Okay. That's all on my agenda. Anybody else going in for the council?
May I?
Yes, sir.
A little handout for you. Our annual jail report, it's in two parts. First part was prepared by jail commander Agelson, who's staff, submitted to the state in late January. Second part, we got our annual inspection on January the tenth. So the second part is a jail inspection report from the state. If you have no reaction required, it's simply, it's a live reading, when you do, actually. If you have any questions. Well, that reading, it did create a pass. We did it extremely well. Very good. That's gonna decide whether I read it or not.
I got questions, Sheriff, while you're, on our courthouse security. Lot of these people, they're coming in with guns, shooting people, or coming in being mad employees, and they can come in our side doors. What keeps us from having that problem?
The commissioners and myself have the final say on, who has guns in the courthouse?
No, I'm talking about an employee getting.
No, that's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm talking about. The commissioners and myself have final authority on which employees, they carry a handgun in the courthouse. So it just so happens, Commissioner Blodgett and I have been discussing about refining that and looking at that. So we are looking at that, and hopefully, next month, we'll be addressing that.
Could be a long gun. I mean, they, anybody could walk in with, with a badge, could walk in these side doors with a AR-15, and come in here and shoot somebody. There's nothing to keep.
Right.
I've had some people around the county ask about that.
Whether they're permitted to carry a handgun in or not, or a long gun, that matters. If they want to come in, they're gonna.
Exactly, unless they come in this door.
Correct, yeah. So I'm not sure, frankly, how we address that.
I know.
Because we don't want to hire two more security guards.
No.
Like, that's an issue, Commissioner Blodgett and I are starting to.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to get a small update on the food and beverage tax? There's very little public information on that, and I did as best I could digging through your minutes and your agendas, and commissioners' minutes and agendas, and fortunately, I wasn't aware that you could watch it on YouTube before this meeting, but it just seems like this thing has started, and the public really doesn't know, you know, what it is, and how the process is gonna work.
So that process hasn't started yet, because it has to be approved at the legislative level, at a state level, before we can bring it to the public, and have like an official process to bring it into our county. It is in a bill right now at the State House. As you may or may not know, that session wraps up on April twenty-ninth. So we really won't know anything as to if we're able to proceed until that happens.
So we're not, so we haven't really got the ball moving yet, is that correct?
Correct. It has to be, it has to be approved at a legislative state level, before we have the opportunity to do that.
But this committee and the commissioners recommended that it get put into a bill, is that?
That we have the opportunity to pass it, yes.
Well, that's a good update, and I'm glad to hear that. The, I guess, I am concerned about transparency, because there's really very, I mean, in. The, I guess, I am concerned about transparency because there's really very, I mean, and maybe it's just a timing issue, but your meetings and your agendas are kind of out of date that are on the county website. And, you know, you guys need to make sure you don't get yourselves in trouble from a public notice standpoint. But it's, you know, there's, hasn't been an agenda from this committee since two thousand twenty-two posted on the website. And maybe the YouTube covers that, but I don't, you know, as a, somebody that's trying to find out and learn something pretty quickly, it's very, your minutes are, are behind, as well as they are not very descriptive of what's actually getting done in these meetings, so I.
Well, we're, we, we understand that, but we're, our ARPA funds have put the ball across us as far as getting a brand-new website fully transparent. That's being done right now, so we don't, it may be really bad at the moment, which it has been for a long time, but we're, we took some of that money, and we're gonna build a brand-new website that has all that. You'll be able to click on there and get whatever information you need at a stroke of a mouse, so.
Unfortunately, that was delayed because Commissioner Ms. Weller was in charge of the website, so.
But it is being built as we speak, but it's gonna take, it takes some time to get that done with all the departments and stuff. The whole county will be accessible through that website once it gets finished, so, okay, thank you.
May I end it at, minutes for both commissioners and council are not posted until they are approved in a public meeting. Because they can, there could be some misstatements, so we don't post those until they're approved.
So it'll be a month. Be a month behind schedule.
So that's why it's behind.
And the agendas, is there a, are you guys required to post your agendas and the details that you're gonna vote on?
We're required to notify the media, I believe they are sent out to the council and departments, commissioners. But as far as posting them on a website, I would like to look into that. I don't know if it's required by the state.
You may or may not be aware, there's also discussion potentially of having a website, I mean, a Facebook page. So there might be more communication via Facebook in the future as well.
What I'm concerned about now, I hear about the future, but if you, you know, you voted on recommending this food and beverage tax, and the best I could tell, the public would have no way to know that that was gonna happen in the comment.
There will be a public session when it's time, it's just what we, we're not there yet.
We didn't vote to actually do the food and beverage tax yet, we just had to give that okay in order to go into the legislature so we could have the opportunity. We haven't done anything with it yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
Yes, I just wanted to bring to the council that we did get an approval letter for the community crossing grant, match grant for twenty twenty-three. We did get awarded, I'm in the process now, but at the commissioners' meeting in a minute, I was appointed to new LPA, DRC, decide the documents, and Jeremy Page will just take over for chat. So after we get those e-documents sent to us, we'll be able to sign them, send them back to the state, and then they'll send us a letter, but that is a seventy-five, twenty-five match grant. Like, and I'm kind of new, trying to figure it all out, but we did get approved, and I was pleased to do that, so. It's a million-dollar grant. Seemingly got nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-three to have, something like that.
What was?
I think our match is three hundred thirty-three, three thirty-three and some change, so.
That was online, I seen it, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, that's great.
Yeah, I was, I was pleased to hear that, it was my first time doing it by myself, and I just, I just wanted to kind of report that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
County appreciates you, the whole bunch. You have something?
Just wanted to let you know, Form elevens for my office will be sent out April twenty-eighth. I just got confirmation this morning that they are ready to go. They'll be sent out on the twenty-eighth, so people will receive them after that.
What is it, reassessment?
It's reassessment, yes, it's for next year's taxes, so people need to realize that.
You're a popular office.
We are a very popular office. Between now and June fifteenth, we are very popular, but people need to realize that it's for next year's tax bill, not this year's tax bill. And if they do not approve of what we have assessed at, or they don't think they could sell their house, their land for what we have assessed at, they can contact our office by phone, they can come in. We have different ways they can appeal, things like that, so they do have the option, please contact our office. Do you have any questions?
The state sets the farm ground.
The state always sets the farm ground.
Going up to about nineteen hundred dollars, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, the state set that?
Yes.
We got nothing to do with that one.
Correct, correct, yes. And a lot of the assessments have, and it's due to sales, what people are paying for their properties. So people need to keep that in mind as well. So just wanted to let people know, and the only thing that's on those Form elevens is this year's assessed value and what it's going to be next year. Doesn't have anything to do with your tax bill, that's all it is.
Information.
Just information.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I was just gonna say, any county agenda that's sent to the radio, we posted on our website beforehand, so.
I don't, you don't put our agenda on the radio, on the website, do you?
It was sent the agenda we posted.
Okay, I know the commissioners is on WTR's website.
Yes.
I didn't know, I didn't take ours last.
So if we get one, yeah, we post everything.
Anyone else have any else? Got any for us, Mark? Nothing? Okay, good, John. I'm gonna make the entertaining party, make the most of it, John.
I'll second that.
Any seconds, all those in favor? I don't know.
Hold that one for me.
I don't make, I don't make my.
You can have too much.
Yeah, take care.
Sorry if I'm all out of receiving interlude.
Recording stopped.